Our schools for going above and beyond. And so we'll start with, I'd like to invite Principal Silvio up here to award the student and staff members of the month from the elementary school.
All right, so our first person that we're going to recognize is our Staff of the Month, so Emily Pritch, come on up. She loves the attention. So we ask staff to nominate teachers or staff members within the school. Emily was nominated by several staff that she works in close proximity with. She was nominated by one person who quoted, "She makes learning fun and enjoyable for the students and the staff, and she works to grow and support all the staff that work with our shared students." Miss Pritch works closely with several instructional assistants. Many of them reported that Mrs. Pritch listens and supports them in their role and makes them feel like a valuable part of the classroom. One assistant reported that she is looking to go back to school to get further into the field, and Miss Pritch is kind of quietly taking her under her wing and coaching her along. And so I want to say thank you because she works in one of our sub separate programs, which is, you know, challenging to manage so many staff under her, and she shows great leadership within that role. And she's really jumping on with the vision and getting her students as many inclusion opportunities as possible. And so I really appreciate that. Congratulations.
Well done. Thank you very much.
And our next one is our Student of the Month. So Dustin Rhodes is our Student of the Month. Come on up. Dustin. Dustin is a 4th grader in our school, and recently he had to help me solve a problem this year with some peers. And he came into my office, and one thing I noticed right away about him is that he's so mature. His teachers tell me that he is kind and a good friend to all, and he ensures that everyone is included all the time. He is a role model student, as evidenced by his behavior at school, with friends and on the bus, bus four just where there are one of our bus incentives. Dustin demonstrates a character that is accepting of all and makes room for everyone. And we got his mom good on the phone when we called from my office. All right, to take a picture. All right, so here is your participant, Dustin. Thank you very much.
And for our middle schools, Staff and Students of the Month, Principal Almonte.
And Assistant Principal C.
So we will start with our staff. Okay, so we have the pleasure of recognizing a remarkable group of individuals who have tirelessly worked behind the scenes to prepare our school for the new academic year. Our custodial staff members, Matt Gavna, Joanna. That's the only one who could join us tonight, but this goes out to the whole group. So Matt Gavna, Jay Sylvester, Dennis Parrott, Chris Bled, and Kyle Phillips have been nominated as Staff Members of the Month at Clinton Middle School. Their commitment to excellence, willingness to go the extra mile, and role in maintaining our school environment have not gone unnoticed. We extend our sincere congratulations to them for this well deserved recognition. Please join me in applauding our custodial staff.
I like the officially branded shirt that you wore. Congratulations. There's bags in here for all the other guys, so you've got a bag of bags.
A bag of bags. Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work. Congratulations.
We also proudly announced Sofia Santos, a dedicated 7th grader, as our Student of the Month at Clinton Middle School. Sofia's unwavering commitment to her studies, active class participation, and kindness to both teachers and peers are truly inspiring. Sofia exemplifies dedication, kindness, and a thirst for knowledge. She radiates positivity and has an infectious smile. As a member of, as a symbol of her exceptional qualities, we present Sofia with the Student of the Month Award for September. We are confident that she will continue to excel and inspire those around her, so please join me in congratulating Sofia on this fall.
Congratulations. Now I'd like to invite Principal Sarmac up for the high school awards.
Good evening, everyone. With the awards to the high school, what we do is during our advisory day on the first Friday of the month after a staff meeting, we have advisory with our students in our homerooms. And our staff and our students are able to recognize or nominate somebody to be recognized at school training. Usually the students can recognize, well, not usually, students can recognize staff or other students, and staff can recognize staff or other students. It just so happens that we always have students that recommend staff and staff that recommend students. So tonight I have two, I have one staff member and one student. Unfortunately, our student couldn't be here tonight. I'll do one first. His name is Jack Cannon. During the open house at CHS this year, Jack, a member of the National Honor Society, took the initiative to review giving directions in Spanish, which his class studied last year in Spanish too. Jack was able to help the Spanish speech to families find a way around the school. And Jack, we thank you. And then we have a staff member that was nominated by a student, Ms. Hannah Gates. Hannah?
I don't have to cry.
Don't cry. So Ms. Gates should be honored because it is her first year teaching at Clinton High School, and myself along with lots of other students already love her. Personally, have always struggled with math and was never a fan. This year, Ms. Gates has created a positive learning environment and encourages all of her students to succeed. She also finds a way to keep us engaged and excited while learning the material. Ms. Hannah Gates, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're gonna take this. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm trying.
All right. That's it, yeah. For those that came, you're already leaving, I didn't have to say that. For those who came for the celebration, and we're gonna go on the rest of the meeting, but if you want to leave, it won't hurt any feelings. We understand. You're welcome to stay for the business part of the meeting, however. Matt, you can stay if you want. We've got nothing. All right, moving on. Anybody here for public comment? The student rep?
Student rep. I don't know.
Good evening.
Hi. Sorry, need to get my, okay. Hi, everyone. My name is McKenna Flanagan, and I'm a representative for the Student Council. So I want to discuss two projects that the Student Council is working on this fall. First, Clinton High School will be hosting a blood drive on Thursday, October 26th that is open to the whole community. Information on how to make an appointment will be available in the next CPS newsletter. There are also flyers up in local businesses. You can make an appointment online at Rhode Island Blood Center's website and use code M O three eight to find the CHS location. You can also email galesgive@clinton.k12.ma.us with any questions. And secondly, the Student Council is partnering with Pink Revolution of New Hampshire again. Pink Revolution is an organization committed to helping those undergoing treatment for all types of cancer. We will be selling apparel with proceeds benefiting both the Student Council and Pink Revolution. And information on how to purchase the apparel will be out shortly. And that's it. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, McKenna. Good job. CTA. I don't think, I know Robyn said she couldn't make it, yeah. The PTA, which I'm now a member of. I am as well. See, you're a hundred percent now, all right? I said a hundred percent of elected officials, I still did join.
I thought you were at ninety-nine percent.
I can only do so much.
Good evening. How are you guys? All right, so we have updates. We have our Fall Bingo Night is set for this coming Sunday, October 1st, at the Turner Hall Pavilion. We are currently looking for volunteers to help us set up and concessions. We did throw that out on our page, so feel free if you want to come help out. We do have tickets for sale are $20. Sponsorships are still available, and so far we have 34 tickets pre-sold and some tables that are already reserved. We have seen a great support from our local businesses, which is a great say to our community. Like I said, Clinton Turner Hall has donated the use of the pavilion. DAH Logistics made a cash sponsorship. Nothing Bunt Cakes has made an in-kind donation. They are donating a ton of little bunt cupcakes to the event for us to sell. I'm super excited. And then Clinton Savings Bank and Lancaster Dental also made cash donations to us towards the event. And then other companies like Pleasant View Company with their porta potties and all that, they made a raffle donation as well. And we did want to share that they have a trunk or treat at CMS on October 15th that, you know, everybody should be aware of for the kiddos. They have some really awesome trucks that they're gonna have there. We also want to say thank you to the families who have donated items from our wish list and helped us out in that way. Since our last meeting, we have added 77 new contacts to our email list, and we now total 333 that are on our email list. Now that's not them having to be a member, that's them just getting the information. So as we get information from you guys and from the community, we share that out. We also have 13 new PTA members since our last meeting, so we're up to 66. Thank you to all of the school committee members who have joined. You are welcome to attend our next meeting, which is Thursday, October 5th at 6:15 in the Clinton Elementary School cafeteria. We will be broadcasting the meeting over Google Meet and sharing that link out. Parks and Rec will provide onsite child watch as usual for the meetings. Just have to pre-register for that with the childcare link that we provide and send out in the newsletter as well as on our PTA Facebook page. The newsletter went out, our most recent one went out on Saturday, the 23rd, with all the details about bingo and all the things and updates. We also have on the horizon, to save the date, October 15th, we are doing a fundraising night at Qdoba in Hudson. It'll be from 4 to 8. You can get dinner, and a portion will go to us to help the schools. And that is all the things.
Thank you so much. You're doing great work.
Thank you so much.
From CPAC, LPAK.
Hi. Hello. So we have a meeting last Thursday. We have 25 family present in that meeting, and we have nine parents that want to be part of the LPAK officers. They don't want to be president or vice president, they just want to be just a group of parents working together. I have few of them here. I have Helene, I have Cynthia, Silvana, and Dilma here, and they're very excited to work. We're gonna have a meeting next October 12th, and we're gonna plan about the LPAK Thanksgiving potluck, and you are welcome to come, and with Hispanic and Portuguese family.
What's the date of that?
The meeting gonna be on October 12th.
Okay.
And for the Thanksgiving dinner, we are planning between the second week of November or the third week of November. More positive on the second week, that Thursday, Friday gonna be holiday, so we can have something that Thursday.
Great.
I want to thank the PTA. They went to our meeting, and they present to the Hispanic and Latino family, and some of our family want to be volunteers in the school. And I think it's great because we have so many children that speak Portuguese, and we need these family here.
Indeed. Thank you so much for all of your great work, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. So first we'll start out with just some staffing updates. We have two of them. Catherine Dale is a CES school psychologist. She was a new hire this year. She resigned. I think it was just was a slightly different fit than she was thinking in that position, so we wish her well. We're kind of working on sort of Plan B for that right now, as far as, you know, it was a new position, so we still have the three school psychs that we had last year, right? So it's, you know, hopefully we can help manage caseloads until we can figure out the next step. And we do have one retirement to announce. Cindy McNally, the Pupil Services Administrative Assistant, she put in her retirement. She'll be retiring at the end of the calendar year. So that's a big one, where I've already posted it, trying to fill that, because there's a lot of, she does a whole lot of stuff with transportation, special ed transportation, and eSped and all those kinds of things, so we'll want to make sure that we're working on our transition process there. All right, social, emotional, and physical wellness, put that in here. Remember, we'll be, and just a reminder, we will be starting to review these. One of the things we'll do at the tri-council meeting, which will actually be our next meeting, is we'll be getting a survey out there to start looking and getting some feedback on where people feel we are with some of these objectives, and if we need to keep them, or any other input from them. So we have a couple surveys that we're gonna be getting out there. And one of the, we have Develop, Process, Termin, Educate, Respond to Student Needs around Addiction, Trauma, Mental Health, those types of things. So the next page in here is sort of a letter from Mass General Hospital and Harvard Med School. And what we have, Abby Mason, sort of as our lead nurse, basically reached out, I think she met him at a meeting and they kind of connected, and we're trying to work with Mass General Hospital to get this ESPTRE implementation. So ESPTRE is screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment. It was something that was kind of built in the laws a while ago, as far as having, basically, when you see students during their regular screenings and those types of things, basically you're asking them if they need help with any type of substance abuse and those types of things. So this is, they're looking to try to make this more efficient, and this is our desire to partner with them. So we're looking to, did send in a letter of support saying that we would like to, we would like to do that, to bring that up. I don't know if we need a motion, at least not yet. Maybe when we get a more formal agreement, like before they would come into the schools, I'll probably bring that to you, so you know. I think right now, at this level, it's still just a letter of support, so. And then the, so then we went up, the other thing is medical policies. You always want to kind of go through and update and revise those. So like JL is in your packet. The first one is the old policy, the second one is the new policy, and there's not a whole lot that's changed. There's some legal references, there's a couple things like that, but for the most part, it's basically all we did was update that to the current MASCE language. The policy after that, JLCC is a new policy that this would match the MASCE guidelines. And then what we have is our existing JLCC, we want to change to JLCC-1. So there's communicable diseases, and then there'd be communicable disease guidelines. Right now, the one that says communicable disease guidelines is our current JLCC-1. So we wanted to just kick it back and get the MASCE policy in there. And then I think that's, that was all we had for the, those are the ones that have some sort of changes. JICD, JIE, and JLB, we don't have any changes, we just wanted to sort of say, you know, we read through them, we looked at them, we know that they are still current. And then the big one that we had in here, JICD, there was an ESPTRE opt-out letter, and really the letter, I'm sure when they adopted the law, it was a sample letter that came with it or something, but really the letter probably shouldn't be part of the policy, and particularly if we're doing it with MGH, we're gonna have to change that letter. So we're proposing to just remove that letter. The policy still references it will send a letter, this is just removing the physical sample letter that's in there in the policy. So I don't know if you're comfortable with that, if you want to make one motion or three motions, or however you'd like to do that, or if you have any other questions.
I'll make a motion that we approve the updates on JL, JLCC, and JLCC-1, and we also acknowledge the review of J1CD, JIE, and JLB.
And JICD with the opt-out of ESPTRE.
Yes.
I'll second the motion. Even further discussion? Do you have another favor? All right. Thank you. Clean that up a little bit. Accountability information, so accountability information was made public on, I'm gonna, I think it was the 19th, it was like last week, it came out. So the good news is none of our, you know, we don't have any, our district as a whole is not requiring assistance or intervention, none of our schools are requiring assistance or intervention. You know, there's, it's always kind of tricky with the, with the results here, because, you know, there's, there are the, the points, and basically they measure your progress towards targets. So that's one thing, so it's all sort of like relative to everybody based on their targets. Then there's some other things, like some percentiles and, you know, scores that you can look that are gonna be more, you know, just regular, you know, comparing to others. So as a district, we were 48, we made, got a 48% in terms of our progress towards our targets. One of the big ones that I just, you know, we, we got four out of four, which meant we exceeded our target in chronic absenteeism. And if you remember that last year, one of our main goals was to try to get the kids back to school and to try to, you know, cut down on the chronic absenteeism. So I think we did a great job. We, I know when we looked at some of the data at the end of the year, we were, we were better than our pre-pandemic levels in terms of chronic absenteeism. So that was a plus. You know, across a lot of these other ones, there's some, you know, different, different success levels, depending on the goals and where we are. If you keep flipping through, eventually you'll get the first chart, you'll get to the first color chart. Just shows you some of the enrollment. I just wanted to go through and look at, you know, so the first chart you have is, it's selected subgroups, so you can just see that our, since 2019, our low income or economically disadvantaged population has gone from 36.1% to 52.7. So our economically disadvantaged population has increased almost 16.6 percentage points. Our first language, not English, has gone from 23.4 to 32.2, an increase of 8.8%. And our English language learners have gone from 9.5 to 17.5, an increase of 8%. And then our high needs, which captures everyone with special ed, English learners, economic disadvantage, has risen from 52.7 to 64.1, or 11.4% increase. So that's since, basically, the snapshot of pre-pandemic till now. That's sort of how our population plays out. You can see in the next one, enrollment by race and year. I'm just showing this because it's how they break down all the, this is how they break down the data, right? So we gotta kind of look at some of this stuff. And you can see that our, our percentage of our student population that is, identifies as Hispanic, has gone from 25 to 38.1, or a 13% increase. And the, our white population has decreased from 68% to 56.3%, or an 11.7 decrease. Most everything else has been pretty stable and low. The, why I mention that is because much like, if you remember when we first, when the elementary school went into, was identified for targeted assistance in 2019, 18, 19, the subgroup that was identified was our white subgroup. And the, right now, that's probably one of our, still one of our most challenging subgroups, particularly at the high school level right now, in terms of when you compare their scores to other white subgroups. So the elementary school is, our accountability percentile is the 35th percentile. They were 58%, basically they made substantial progress towards their targets. And if you look, the little colorful chart there, it says accountability percentile. So that's basically looking at the average, the achievement scores, basically the MCAS scores, of how Clinton's students did relative to the state, okay? So we're pretty much, you know, for most part, we were in the 30s. Our students with disabilities were the 59th percentile, so we're in the top half of the state. But when you look at those changes across the board, we went up, you know, 15% was our lowest, we went up 24% for some of our subgroups. That's a lot. So when they did the webinar with us, they told us that, you know, you shouldn't read too much into your percentiles unless it's really over like five, okay? So it's like if you, you know, you go up two, you go down two, that's essentially no change. But he said if you, once you get over five, well, here we're talking increases of, you know, 15, you know, three or four times that. So that's very promising from the elementary school. I think that's showing that the work they're doing down there is paying off, and that we've now had multiple years of students doing some of this, who are now in our test-taking areas, and we're seeing that. The middle school, the accountability percentile was 27, they still had substantial progress towards targets. Same thing, if you kind of look at their accountability percentiles, all of them really showed progress for this year. Particularly, you know, you had, same thing, you had a lot of them that were jumps of, you know, around 10 or between 10 and 15. Those are still substantial jumps. Particularly, the largest gaining group was the Hispanic Latino, going from 28 to the 42nd percentile. So an increase of 14 percentiles. And we'll dig deeper, like internally, we'll dig deeper into what does that mean, you know, and what does that mean, like how did we do item by item? How did we do standard by standard? So we can look at how we need to improve. This is really just kind of giving you the autopsy of last year. The high school is at the 16th percentile, moderate progress, 39% towards improvement targets, which is moderate progress towards them. You know, you can see here that the accountability percentile actually kind of went down in a few. Our students with disabilities, actually, we didn't have a substantial enough testing group to even report before. Now we do. So they're 23, but there's no change because it wasn't a group that we had enough to report on. So we will, this is a group that we've probably been spending the most attention on. We started, we reached out to, had a meeting today with Looney Math Consulting. We worked with them a little bit prior to the pandemic to come in and sort of look at supporting our math department, particularly some of the curriculum changes that we've made or may have to make. So we're working on this one. It should be noted, though, when you kind of time this out, it's funny that these students are all students, like when, when the We worked with them a little bit when, prior to the pandemic, to come in and sort of look at supporting our math department, particularly some of the curriculum changes that we've made or may have to make. So we're working on this one. It should be noted, though, when you kind of time this out, it's funny that these students are all students, like when, when the elementary school got first identified in 2019, based on those like third and fourth graders, these students would have been like, like fifth and sixth grade right at that time, right? So it kind of means that sort of, a lot of that work that we've been doing down below that I think you're seeing us roll into the middle school, this group just sort of missed, right? They would have been that last group sort of going up as we were making a lot of those changes. And then obviously, they, they had COVID in middle school. So everyone had the COVID years, but, so hopefully, we're working on, you know, looking at our interventions and the supports we need at the high school. But I think that, you know, I think we'll be, we'll be able to rate that ship. So overall, those are our, that's sort of a snapshot of our accountability. Like I said, we'll share a little more, not too much more, but we'll share a little more in, in some of what it might mean at the tri-council meeting at the next, the next one.
Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, looking, thank you for the presentation. And to me, it comes down to growth. You know, achievement is one thing, but if, if kids aren't making substantial growth, then, then I, you know, that's indicative of a problem. And yet, you look at the way Clinton students are growing, particularly when it comes to the lowest performing students and students with disabilities, I think there's, there's a lot to be excited about. And, you know, the fact that our students have demonstrated that they are growing is indicative of all the hard work that, that you and the staff are putting into this process.
Thank you. I know that, you know, I know, I know our staff has worked tremendously hard to adopt a lot of different things and change a lot of things, particularly at the elementary and even the middle school level. And it's nice to see that those are starting to pay off. And I think as we continue rolling those up, we'll see it pay off at the, at the high school level, too. I'm confident of that, so. So the goals, I didn't really change any of the goals. So I proposed these goals for you last time. I still think they're pretty much the same. I do think what I'm looking, they took on a little more of a meaning, particularly with like evaluating the effectiveness of the recently implemented math curriculum. Like that's why I said I met with Looney Math today. They're going to come in, I think, early October to try to sit with us and look and make sure, you know, how we're using the curriculum and those types of things. So definitely, we're taking, taking a look at that. And then I even know today, I talked to, I had a meeting at the middle school where we were talking about a little bit, some of the challenges of implementing the ELA curriculum at that level and what we might be able to do to support that. So I think, I think those are the right places to start looking right now. And then the last one on there, obviously, once the, I think the health and wellness curriculum has been officially approved, it hasn't really been rolled out with any type of guidance or anything yet, but we'll see as that comes out and what we, how we want to do, handle that. So I don't know if you guys want to accept those goals or...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept Dr. Meyer's goals for the coming school year.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Any note in all favor?
All right. Thank you. MSBA update. So in your packet, you'll see some current drawings of the, the middle school. This is a, the proposed middle school. This is a, they call it like an iterative process, right? So we have a meeting, we have discussions, and then little tweaks might be made here and there. Already, one of the ones I can tell you is, if you look at the one that has the legend on it with like the overview, where number three is, that playground down the front is probably going to be moved up to that, sort of the opposite corner of the building there where there's like a green space. That's basically where the fourth and fifth grade hallway is. It would put the playground right outside the fourth and fifth grade hallway, and it wouldn't put it right next to the cafeteria that way. So if you had one group at recess and one group at lunch, they're not, you know, a glass wall away from each other. And that way, hopefully, that number four would be a place that would also have some outside seating so students could come out. So you can see, I mean, not much has changed. It's still the existing curb cuts from West Boylston Street. A parent traffic would loop around the building, buses would cut in front, parking in the middle. There was a lot of questions on that number 14 because it's sort of a different color. Is that a turf field or not? And it is one of the things they're going to look at to see if it could be a turf field, but it's one of those things that it's probably going to be more of one of those, like a change order that we would keep, that we would know the approximate cost, and then you would look at, you know, your contingency money and stuff and where, where you've been spending because that's one of the last, that'd be one of the last things in the project. So if there's kind of leftover money, it might be able to be used for that. If not, it'll be just a regular field. The next kind of shows you a little bit more of a breakdown of what the school looks like. There's two floors. As I mentioned, like the one wing is just going to be the fourth and fifth grade. The wing closest to the reservoir would be the seventh and eighth grade. And then the sixth grade is kind of on the second floor, like over the offices and the locker rooms and, or the, not the locker rooms, but the, those, like the health room and that kind of stuff there. Say, it's not me, is it? The, there's some neat features you can see. If you can, now they're starting, as they start to sketch it out, you can see the, if you look at the bathrooms, they kind of have that like open sink area. We toured a couple of schools in this process, and we saw these middle schools that had this, where the sink is sort of, it's still tucked away a little bit, but it's kind of open so that it just cuts down on, you know, nonsense, right? So, so if you, to use the restroom, you, you still go around and you're in a private area, but then when you come to like wash your hands, you're out where it's, it can be more easily supervised. And then, you know, for the most part, that's, you know, not, not a whole lot has, has changed. It's just getting a little bit more detailed. We have had meetings with everyone, so some suggestions are starting to be built in here as we've had meetings to say, okay, where would you need, you know, where would you need a sink or where would you need, what would you need from this? You know, for example, we meet with the nurses and you look at those rooms and say, which ones need a window, which ones don't need a window, that kind of stuff. So, so that's where we stand right now. One of the major things that we did at the last meeting, you'll see the construction delivery method. So there are two main construction delivery methods. One is design, bid, build, and one is CM at risk, basically, construction manager at risk. And with design, bid, build, essentially, that means as a building committee, we're going to put all of the services out there. So we would have to go get a bid for plumbing. We'd have to go get a bid for electrical. We'd have to go get a bid for, and there would be, there's a whole bunch of them that we would have to essentially do. With CM at risk, basically, we do one big process to hire a construction manager, and then the construction manager is going to take over a lot of that, that bidding and getting the subcontractors and stuff. There's still a lot of transparency. The good, the good part about it is the CM normally, the construction manager company comes on board earlier. So they're really more of a, they truly become more of like another partner on your team in terms of getting this project done. So we are moving forward with the, the vote was made to proceed with CM at risk, so we'll be doing a RF, I think, which one we're doing? I think it's RFP first. And then to get the, see which companies are interested, we'll review them, make a short list, and it would be very similar to like the process we did to select an OPM or to select a designer, where they'll come back and do a presentation, and then we'll have to, to negotiate with them. There's a timeline, after that, the next one's a timeline. So we're hoping to have a construction manager on board in January. So basically, this is September. We're hoping to get it posted and, and done by January. And like I said, a lot of that will be, a lot of this process now, which is nice, is it's just going to hire the designer. Once you bring the OPM on board, you've got someone that's helping us with it. It's not like when we hired the OPM and we had to do all the heavy lifting ourselves, so. And then a big thing, the last one here, it says MSBA amendment. One of the big topics of conversation that we're working on now is the energy requirements for the building. And this is something that, the earlier in the design process, you can make these decisions easier, it's going to be. But based on essentially like some of the state laws and the MSBA's now new code, the energy criteria is pretty strict, to the point where essentially the, if you're really going to meet, if you're going to meet it to the point where you're going to try to earn, you can earn up to 4% in additional reimbursement for meeting it. That if you're going to go that way, essentially, you got to go with all electric. So it's going to be, so you're not going to have a gas boiler, you're not going to have anything like that. You can still have, you can have fossil fuels as a backup, so you can still have a generator so that if your electric was down, your electrical stuff would work, but you would basically be running off all electric. That's sort of where they're moving with everything now. And, you know, they're, and then the other part of the requirement is, and it's sort of a, it's even if you don't, if for some reason you were not going to go with electric, with the new code, you still have to build your services so that they're pre-wired and ready for electric so that you can swap it out. Because they're, they're, they're really getting to the point where they're going to start phasing out the construction of a lot, the manufacturing of a lot of the fossil fuels. So there, you see the little chart where it just talks about, you know, the earlier in this, we're in the schematic design right now. So the earlier we can make this change, the easier it is. If you have to make these changes, you know, the further you go with schematic design, if you have to make a change, now it has more trickle-down effect. So we're trying to make sure we, we have our energy discussion. It's going to be the next topic for the building committee, that we're going to run some numbers for us. And this is where you can see this whole thing where this compliance pathway. So the PSR design, that was the one we already put in, preferred schematic, and that was sort of what our preferred schematic was built to, was based on. That doesn't exist anymore. The MSB changed their code, MSB had changed their code, so you have to at least hit stretch code in the middle. And then, once you hit stretch code, stretch code, he said, they said the opt-in code really doesn't seem to be, the opt-in code actually seems to be fairly easy. It's getting to stretch code that's going to be harder. And this is things like energy compliance, you have to do, so when you look at some of these things like envelope backstop, like they have to do, or go to the third one there, too, air leakage testing, right? So literally, they have to do, they have to do tests to show that the building has been sealed up enough that we're not losing energy through air leakage. Now, we'll have air handling systems that are moving air and cleaning air and conditioning air in the whole building, but those types of things. And then there's changes in how they did the, how they calculate your R-value because they're now factoring in the heat loss of metal studs, so you have to add additional layers of insulation. So, so there's a lot going into it. That's sort of the process that we are right now. And then you can see kind of this last slide talks about, you know, is it all electrical systems or rooftop solar and electric readiness, or net-zero energy on the site with all electrical systems or electric readiness if using, using gas? So, you know, one of the things, some schools have started looking at certain things called, like geothermal and that kind of stuff. I don't think, the initial thought with geothermal is that we might actually not have, might not have enough space to the number of wells that we would need, geothermal wells that we would need. And then, and if we kind of go too, you know, you get too far away and it kind of defeats the purpose of it. So that's just sort of an update of where we are. There's a lot, I feel like there's a lot going on in those meetings all the time. It is nice that we have, you know, Clinton does have a permanent building committee, so we do have professionals in the trades that are on that committee that are, that are familiar with this stuff, that are asking a lot of the, the good questions. So that's, it's good. And I think we're, like I said, I think the next, next meeting, I think, is to look at who's going to be on the CM at risk committee. And then I think maybe it's a meeting after that is going to be to try to determine, we're trying to get some of the numbers on electrification and what that looks like. And then, so one of the concerns is just, you know, when you, when you figure out the whole package, if you electrify, put in, there's a lot of grants and incentives, too, especially through the, some of the federal programs. And so if you put in like heat pumps and those types of things, you can actually get, you might be able to get that upfront cost lower. But then you got to figure out what's, what are you actually using, going to be using for electricity? What's the cost of electricity looking like? And then what is the life, lifecycle of those, right? So in terms of how frequently do you have to replace like a heat pump versus a gas boiler, those types of things? So those are the type of things we're trying to project out right now so we can see what makes the most, what makes financial sense, at least in some levels. Any questions on the building?
I just want to make sure I'm clear. So where the new parking lot is going to be is where the existing building is now?
Correct.
Am I reading that right?
Yep. So what you would probably have is, they would be able to, so the whole, the whole point of that is it should minimize disruption, right? So essentially, they should be able to put up almost like a fence between the existing building and the fields. They'll build the new building. And then even when we open the new building, we'll probably still be using the old parking lot. They'll tear the old building down, build the new parking lot, and then probably the last step will be that, the new replacement field up there. And that's why I said one of the things we might look at is, what would the cost of making that a turf field be? If that's something we want to look at, because that's going to be so late in the project, at that point, we would know, are we under budget, over budget? Is it a, you know, if we're under budget significantly, is that a change order we could, we could want to consider?
So there won't be any fields to the new, to the, there won't be any fields to the right of the new school then?
There will be, not like baseball fields, though, but there'll be some fields that like June classes can use, like they'll be leveled and they'll be usable, but they're not going to be that way. So in the net of it, like we'll have to look at, and that, part of it comes, you know, the, the exact design of that replacement field there. Where are we going to put a softball diamond in there or not? That's one of the conversations. In the end, we probably are going to lose a baseball field right now the way this is. And we had some, some talks of, is it possible to put like a diamond in across the street to kind of bring that back, like maybe up by where the soccer fields are over there, something like that? So, because putting in just a, I mean, there's not dugouts or anything, so like just putting in a backstop and a diamond shouldn't be a whole heck of a lot, so.
Have they gone about three damage to the diamond that's on the side of the high school?
Yes, we talked about that, too, about looking at...
They've got a footprint there.
Right. To help like recapture one of the fields by making sure that one's in as playable, as shape as it can be. Yeah, we've talked about that. Yep.
The dugout's a little less than I...
Yeah. So the last thing I got, or, well, one of the last things here is the grant updates. Not a whole lot for you, it just sort of, just gives you a snapshot. These are, these are all entitlement grants. So we get 1.1 million in our basic entitlement grants, and then we got additional 356,000 in the improving ventilation and air quality grant. Typically, these are used for, you know, if you look at like the 240 grant, the IDEA, special education grant, you know, 23 of our instructional assistants are paid out of that. Like those aren't new positions, that's how we carry those positions. So almost a third of our IAs are paid for by, by that grant. And then the, same thing with Title I, typically that goes to staff, reading specialists, those types of things. Title II is typically professional development. Title IV is usually looking at opportunities for students like MCAT or early college AP, that kind of stuff. 262 is only for early childhood, so we basically use that to pay for one of the salaries or it doesn't even cover a full salary of a preschool IA. The 400 grant is Perkins. That's for the career programs. Right now, we have two Perkins programs. We have the early childhood up at the high school, and we have the engineering at the high school. And then Title Five, Title III is English language acquisition, and the main expenditure from that one right now is family liaison salary. And you can see the status over there. The Title I, II, III, and IV have all been approved. 240 and 262, we revised them, we sent them in, asked for revisions, we submitted revisions. I think we got one more round of revisions we got to submit, but we're getting pretty close. And the 400, I actually resubmitted. We did get revisions back on that over the, the end of last week. I resubmitted that today. So we're trying to get all those going. The improving ventilation and air quality, meeting with Brian, right now, the plan would be to spend the bulk of that grant in this building to replace things like the squeaky unit over there. But the, because there was a warrant article out to town approved, that they're already trying to get the ball rolling on doing the HVAC stuff at the elementary school. So we're trying to take care of these buildings.